Okay. Go back. You know. Since they had to get that meeting, alright, we'll do chair support. Questions or things on that? Okay, move on to purchase and expect, we'll talk about the lawnmower.
Yeah, I didn't get around to that. Give. I need to. Get that thing built on.
Good deal is working now.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Public Works, the streets, we. Just wanna.
That was the same prices last year. I'd say go for it.
He was saying that other guy that he reached out to get another bid was a hundred dollars more. And he's gonna do it by himself. And he was gonna come in by the hour.
Yeah, so could have.
Like. I don't know, I said this guy did, I thought he did a great job and had two machines there on the back and then a sweeper, so. Guys want to continue on? Keep in the streets again?
Um, no, go ahead. I make a motion.
I'll do the sec- I'll do the second.
Diane, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed? And the Dakota pump. Those two deals. With the Dakota pump.
I'll make a motion for that one.
Okay.
Well, second.
Move on to claims here.
I want to jump in quick, I didn't get it on there, here, I got a doctor's appointment for the twenty first. Just in the morning. Um, it's alright if I just do a half day for, I'll be back in at noon or so. Just on, of April, April twenty first.
Oh, it's Friday.
Yeah, it's a Friday. Jump, just do that and it'll come back to work, so.
Alright.
I'll move on to claims. Questions or concerns on claims?
The lawnmower one? It's repeated at the same dollar amount, is that like a payment?
I think that's from the different. Spreading it between in all the different funds, so it's for like with the.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, yeah, because we use it at the lagoons, we use it everywhere, so it gets pulled from.
So that makes sense.
Yep, and if you, it works out to being the eight thousand eight hundred, which is the quoted price.
Okay.
Yep. It's just one of the ones we have to break up, so.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Change, sorry, um. Meyer Henry. Uh. I think you've got some spelling errors there. Unless it's abbreviated, but I don't see it being abbreviated. The three thousand nine thirteen fifty.
The bond count. Improvements for, it's, it's a bond council for the called Clean Water Project. It cuts it off because it's on the improvements, other, it's, that's what it goes to is improvements other than buildings, but it does, that's what the. Part of the title of that, that code you, like that E six oh four dash four three two zero zero dash four three three zero zero space, and then that's all still part of the title and it just cuts it off.
Can we at least fix project, so that's spelled correctly?
Yeah, I can.
Project?
Yep.
And help wanted under pool, new century press. Those two.
If we get that fixed.
Motion.
Yeah.
Second. Yes. Alright. Almost same time. Kind of go backwards here. Court trust proposal.
In the packet.
Yeah, right into the packet here. So, I, next with Chris here. Friday ago. Court trust. Um. Kind of keep two relationships probably open with some banks, or with, stay with Relia Bank and Court Trust. Relia will always be our main bank. I'm just looking at Court Trust being our investment bank. If any discussion. So he gave a couple proposals, if you still have money putting down in Court Trust. Million dollars to Court Trust right now. So husband, you kind of wanted to break it down, if you guys want to have, I guess you're supposed to, if you guys want to have a relationship with two banks or do two banks. Have that discussion too.
Just so I'm clarifying, we have. We have a letter from Relia Bank and then the following page.
The letter from Relia Bank, that's a loan proposal.
Right, so then the following page is all reviewing from.
Yeah, this is just what Chris sent me over. You kind of read through it at the bottom, so. Like halfway down is the proposal. And breaks it down. So. So I'm kind of open to discussion. Got some. The banking issue. Guys wanna? Stay with one bank or work with both banks?
I guess I would. Prefer going with Relia Bank just because they're local and.
Well, we'll always be with Relia Bank, yep.
Well.
Just move everything, no, you're saying?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, I mean, for what they're gonna help us out with. I guess that would be my. Opinion, I guess. I'm assuming Relia Bank has.
They have.
Sorry, put you on the spot, but.
We do, and that's the thing is, I sat down with Kyle afterwards.
I know it's hard to pull out of a bank, but.
Well, no, and I, I sat down with both banks and I went to, after I had meeting with Chris, I sat down with Kyle and I kind of told him what I was looking at, and it's nothing against. There was, I mean, Relia Bank always gonna be our main bank, but at the same time, I want to entertain the option of having two banks, one Court Trust didn't do anything to lose our business, they just. Didn't come into town and Relia Bank actually, now, when they moved into town, beat out Court Trust on a lot of things, so. But. Court Trust or Relia Bank does. Right now have better interest rate on the CDs, which we're looking at right now than. Court Trust also, so.
Is there a reason for the dollar amount to stay at Court Trust? Is that something we just, is that a number we chose, or was there reasoning behind that dollar?
The first, because we just didn't want to move, complete all funds right away, like, we were trying to balance everything out before we make the full switch. You know, so. You and, was it Seth, you and Kyle kind of discussed, it was a eight hundred right away, or, or just? Just to get things going?
Yeah.
And we gotta make that transition eventually here pretty soon to cutting down the, shutting off the credit cards and. Not. Using. For transactions.
I have a couple things that are. In my thoughts, so. First, I think that the recent stuff that's been going on in the banking world should tell anybody that we're dealing with this, a large amount of money, that maybe it is. Best practice to maybe have our eggs in two different spots, especially when we have so many people relying on us to make sure that we pay the bills and maintain the city, maybe there is some conversation around that. Maybe this dollar amount is maybe a concern, maybe we don't need to leave as much with Court Trust Bank, um. But, that's just kind of my thoughts, in the sense that if something were to happen with Relia Bank, that we still have funds to maintain operations of the city.
Piece of mind a little bit, sorry, I don't mean to.
Yeah, piece of mind.
We're a hundred percent insured by our bond market for public funds, so even if the world ends, you're moving the city's money.
Well, that's nice.
I like my job.
Yep.
So there's certain things that we're gonna do right a hundred percent of the time.
Yeah.
This is one.
That, that, that is where my thoughts went, um, my second thought is maybe not that a lot amount of money stays with Court Trust, maybe we do something different with the dollar amount. Um. Maturity years on the CDs, meaning that that money would sit there for one, two or three years without us being able to use it, are we able to commit to that today?
We can sit, we can sit at seven hundred and fifty in a CD for a year.
Yep.
The one year CD, that's where the plan proposal right now, and we can use this vice versa, whatever, directly go, I think we need to do this regardless, because we've never made money off of money like this.
Right, yep, I agree.
So. Put two hundred and fifty thousand into a saving, saving account, make, you know, what is Relia Bank's interest on savings? No, but I mean, what, because we gotta have some access to.
Point five, something.
Point five, yeah. Not good. Um. Yeah, so. That's where that. Two hundred and fifty comes from, that's honestly probably what we need to, our safety net, just to pull back and forth, because we have enough, just, I think we're just a little shy of what we have in.
A little shy.
What, in Relia Bank for yearly operation? Or what we budgeted for yearly operation, not saying what we're gonna spend, but we budgeted for yearly operation.
You're saying we, we're two fifty shy of that?
No, we're, it's like eight hundred and, what?
Yeah.
We're like, I don't know, like eight, I don't have the exact numbers, like eight hundred and forty or eight hundred.
Yeah.
So under a thousand.
Yeah, under.
Yeah.
Under a hundred thousand, so, that's where that two fifties are safe, complete safety net.
Eighty nine, okay.
So, we can operate. So not, you know, we can be gone with the seven hundred and fifty thousand per year. No. You said, I know, Relia Bank's at four point five.
Four point one on nine, on nine, one CD rate.
At four point one. And.
At what dollar amount?
Twenty five hundred dollars or more.
And I only earn two on five grand.
Because of the interest rates difference.
So, so if there's interest rates, four, four point one percent, you said? Four point one in nine months, there's this three point two five for a year.
Yeah, well, I know the math doesn't, the math's better with Relia Bank, but we have, also with Relia Bank, we have one point five in savings. So we'll win, we'll gain a few percentage on the savings, it just comes down to, I know, Relia Bank's gonna beat the CDs, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, do we want to have a relationship with both banks, or we want to move all into one? That's where it comes down.
Well, there's a few other things here too, because then we do the credit card process, and you guys have credit cards?
That's got the application.
Yep, and we'll, we'll, we'll do that, that's just. This isn't what we want to, if we want to maintain that, which we don't need to maintain that, with, with Court Trust. I honestly think we don't even, whole, there'll be zero transactions if we do, of course, if we stay with Court Trust on the savings side, it's just gonna be an interest only. Investment side, so there will be no daily operation. One, it'd be better for the auditors, because we don't want. Money bouncing back and forth, so.
Yep.
I know the auditors want one account, but I think that's just because it's easier for their job. So. Regardless, I think we move on, putting our money into some sort of CD. As you can see right here. You know, the seven hundred and fifty, that's twenty four thousand dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's. We can either have that revolving or, you know. Projects that we got coming up, we can reinvest it back in there by the time we want to use it.
I'm just wondering if we want to be, obviously we'd be more money ahead, but putting it in their CDs.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that.
I, I haven't heard a advantage for Court Trust yet.
No.
I haven't either.
And that's fine, I just said, I just wanted to know.
Can I public input here?
Yes.
Um, from a business perspective, putting your eight dollar in one basket and losing a relationship of potentially having a competitor. Um, these guys obviously chump at the bit on wanting business, and when you leave however many years you've done with Court Trust and their ability to give you some competitive. Rates, you move it all into one and you lose that relationship with Court Trust, you're shooting yourself in the foot long term, we've done that in our business and we've shot ourselves in the foot. We lost a long history with a different bank by moving and. We know there are no other options, so I think leaving a competitive edge is a smart business idea.
I agree.
Yeah, how many years we've been with Court Trust, do you know?
Hasn't been very many. Three.
That's three.
Both kinds of three.
I mean, I'm gonna give my, I mean, I got a great relationship with Kyle, I mean, him and I talked, there's nothing, but I don't feel bad about Court, our Relia Bank. I just think, I also agree that it's good practice to have two accounts, that's just my perspective.
Well, here, here's a question, can you just pull some of it, put it into the higher interest rate?
Well, we can do that too.
And then may, maybe like your two and three year.
Yeah.
You leave.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, we don't, that's why I said, we don't have to necessarily leave all this one million into Court Trust, we don't have to do that, we can pull more out and whatever.
You just need us to decide tonight if we choose to continue with two banking entities or one.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then.
That's what we need.
We can table, we can table the CD for now and probably make it next month's agenda if we want to, or we can try and decide that tonight.
Often the interest rates change on CDs. They can change it, so.
Yeah, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a, a pressing issue also, so. It's just my, I mean, like I said. Especially hard when the bankers in, right? No, but.
Be informative, shake hands and hugs.
Like I said, I know ultimately Relia Bank right now changes. That's not.
But. Okay, at nine months, does it renew at that rate? No, so after nine months, it'll renew on a six month and those rates are not good, when you go give it one something, that's not considered a special term, so like three, six, twelve, twenty four, also standard rates, that's why, you have ten day grace periods, I'd work with it. But then you raise period and most of the time we close it and open a different one, it's a special thing.
That's why ultimately, by five year. You lock into that five year at that rate, it wasn't a fluctuation, and I know, is that too with you guys, because I know with Court Trust, it was the same rate throughout all the years.
It's gonna be locked in and.
No, but I mean, the, the same. So four point one, is that through all year?
That's just for the nine.
Nine.
Yeah. It's like, we, we offer a five year CD, but it's like a five five right now.
Yeah, and that was one thing about it, what, when I was talking about Chris, he couldn't believe their five year was the same as the one year right now, he's like, I've never seen it like that right now, so.
I would be a real amiss if I encouraged anyone to lock in money for five years.
Yeah, what, we can't do five years lock in.
I would attempt to block you up.
But. Just for the record. Yeah. I mean, open for more discussion on it.
I just think, um, I'd like to see a longer timeframe, see how this rolls.
The, the interest, or the CD rates?
Well, that and, um, yeah, as far as deciding what to do with that and just building our relationship with Relia Bank, but not cutting off.
Court Trust.
Yeah.
Can you present us with a proposal next meeting? For the same CDs and everything for rates and everything?
Bring us something in. So, and then we'll lock in rates. Next meeting? Regardless, I think next meeting we have to lock something in.
Yeah. We lose out of the bubble. Yeah, we can't, I mean, it's a great advantage of to have that extra money to play with.
Not trying to put you under the foot and not hold you anything, what do you see next month? Anything?
So the Fed doesn't meet till the end of May to determine if anything's gonna change. I. This could all change tomorrow, so I mean, unless it's the fam, there's nothing specifically that's gonna go terrible, and now by the end of October here, I foresee either. Hit the actual fam, or we're just maintaining the status quo. And either way, it's a bad thing, we either gotta step on the gas here and drive us into a recession, or start repealing some stuff and try to get inflation taken care of, either way, it's not gonna be good short term. So I don't expect rates to change much in the next. Right. What, what have the rates been doing over like the last six months? Fairly moved, so we've had this rate in our CDs since December. Okay. Um, they were climbing up until then pretty dramatically, but that was when the Fed was doing three quarter point hikes every month, now they've gone down to a quarter. And now that they don't meet in April, they'll meet in the May.
Yeah.
Our committee meets once a week on if we're gonna change rates on anything, they can have an emergency meeting whenever anything major happens.
Okay. On that note, we're just tabled interests or the CDs. Are we keeping the option of? Our. Relationship with both, right now? Or you just want to table it?
So now, let's keep that option open.
Yeah.
Both banks.
Yeah, like, yeah, idea of both banks for right now.
Yeah. Okay. We'll stay with that then, you know. Yeah, I guess we.
To keep both things.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
A motion, come Julie. Second. Second.
I'll second you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Times.
What was your minimum rate for them CDs, for the nine, nine month, the amount next?
Okay. You go back, oh. Hey, where are we jumping? Now, we're gonna go, we're gonna go to base.
Twenty hours.
Eight thirty or four, yeah, we close for twelve thirty one.
We're gonna do, B and C are gonna be kind of tied together, so, go to the baseball league.
Go to public time?
Yeah.
How weird, yeah, how weird.
Brandon, you got anything? You got anything?
Okay.
I marked it down, you said whoo-hoo.
Okay. So don't, don't look at the lease payments options on the bottom. Decided to do this, we're not gonna go with that.
Okay, where's, okay.
So. This is the footlights on the little fields. There's a man right now. Or fields to do, there's a shortage in field, so, let's just say that with the tribal ball facilitation and everything going on. We can hold double headers up in Colton right now, if we put these lights on. Um, which would be a great thing for. Classic corner. Our activity in Colton. Um. Getting pretty strong response back with the sponsors that we've been doing at the park, so. Honestly, with, I mean, we have money budgeted enough to, if we didn't have sponsors that we could make the payments, if we go to the loan payment with Relia Bank. We have the money budgeted to do that. I remember what that. Rate was per year, or, not the rate per year, but, uh, per year, was it like thirteen?
Came out thirteen twenty five a month upon seven year.
That's six, so it was like thirteen nine, or something like that.
Put a payment on it, everybody knows what term you guys wanted to get into.
Would you say thirteen?
And on seven year, and it's a thirteen, twelve, thirteen hundred. Don't love to do that.
Um. So. I'll get that.
And that could, I could be missing the room.
No, that sounds right, well, did you email that to me? No. Oh, I think that's because we were sitting down and talking.
Your wife was calling you.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Do you have a good response so far for the?
I do, so, I'm pretty sure, at the minimum, we're gonna have, well, from what I've talked to, minimum ten businesses locked in at the fifteen hundred. So. Banner is coming at eight hundred fifty, you know, we just got these mailed out last week, so I don't think anybody got them till Friday, so. Obviously, we haven't seen anything back yet, but. Everyone I talked to said. That's. Great advertisement and. I think what we had set up was. Pretty, pretty reasonable with the fifteen hundred, so.
Has everybody seen your pitch?
I think.
I have my copy.
Yeah. I think. I don't, I think, yeah, but you guys all seen the proposal letter and all that too, yep.
So what is a turnaround, say we. Go for this, Trevor?
Yeah.
Um. As far as their installation and stuff, how far out are they, did you give an estimate?
So, yeah, I talked to him and I said, because if you get approved this month and you let me know right away, he goes, I can have everything set up in June, beginning of June, so we can have lights on the little field. Otherwise, then we'll probably be, it won't be.
It'll be a season over.
So. Yeah.
Is that both little fields or just the one?
Just the one little field.
West.
Uh, the west end.
The west side?
Yeah, okay, I know we, we proposed this like last year, I think you remember, and we had the diagram of all the, the lights, and we have it set up, so the one pole. We can always put a light onto it and shine onto the other, the other field too. They stayed with the same rate as, as last year, or not same rate, but same price as last year. Um, I know we tabled it, because we were just, didn't know about.
Right.
Funding.
So, you said we can put another light on that pole to shine on the other field?
Yeah, I didn't get a price on that, I don't know.
Just curious how much more they want to do that.
So.
So you, we budgeted how much for that, this already?
Well, we didn't budget anything for these lights.
Okay.
We did not budget, we just budgeted, we got what, fifteen thousand budgeted?
A little less than fifteen thousand, the park improvements, and then we've also got with, um, we with third penny we could pull a little bit from and cover that payment.
So, oh, and I.
And then our sponsors.
And then our sponsors, also we talked to, so I'm gonna talk to them, you guys did this group, I'm gonna talk to Musco and see if. Like five, ten percent, and once that, obviously, I think once construction's completely, we can pay, so hopefully by then, I'm talking with Sioux Valley, they have a program, but we could actually gain up to ten thousand for them lights, too. A grant, so, talked to Brandon and Jay from Sioux Valley, also, there's a fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred dollar rebate on the, we can get from Sioux Valley. on the, we can get from Sioux Valley on the lights. And Sioux Valley, Sioux Valley also gave us fifteen hundred for the sponsorship too.
How much of the parking recs fund are we thinking they'll be using towards us?
That'd be the rest of it for the park improvements if we, if we don't get anything else. Yeah, but with this.
But. Seven years, we can have paid up regardless even to if we do, I'm just looking at the long term or what we get out of the park, but even if we do the CDs and the sponsorships, I mean, if we had to pull from the CDs, you know. We shouldn't have to, so.
Now that parking recs fund, are we gonna need to be a reserve on that until we get the pool up and going? Because if there's maintenance or anything that needs to be done. Isn't that that fund?
We've got, no, there's, because there's a different one, because you're.
I don't remember.
So if we, we don't burst pipes or motors or.
This, this one is just the park, yeah, what I'm, what I'm talking about. There's a separate one for the pool.
I just didn't know if there was like, if we actually had put purposeful money in that one. That's my.
And I know I talked to like a couple businesses and they said sponsors, I said, you know, can they help pay to get these lights? And a lot of them jumped on board, put the lights for these little kids, you know. And it'd be a win for them sponsors staying with the end of the year.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm just, that my, my.
Oh, yeah.
Reserve was just making sure that we always, we kind of cross our fingers when we turn the pool on, to make sure everything is good to go.
We're repairing maintenance for the pool. We've got five thousand budgeted for that, that separate from everything else. Else, um, and then just for park improvements, we've got, um, there's a total of it thirty, uh, thirty-five thousand. We spent, um, it was a little over twenty thousand on the current financing of the lights that, or we already have, so.
So.
When's that maturity date?
It's a couple of years. I'll have to look to remember, but I, it's not for a couple of years.
Yeah, but we're about, we're about cash, I mean, we're not.
So what I was thinking through is.
Three years ago? Hey, sorry, Ryan.
No, that's okay, um. I don't know if I'm, I, I just, from history conversations, I would be concerned with just making sure that we have enough money readily available. If something happens on a Friday night, we're supposed to open Saturday morning, that we have access to money right away. Versus like this is an ability to do a loan structure where if something doesn't operate correctly with that pool when we turn it on, we're gonna need access to money more immediately versus draining or taking from that fund to put it towards this, and then we end up turning something on and we have an immediate five thousand dollar expense for the pool.
Yeah.
Is my concern.
Okay, well, here's, here's another thing, if I read right on. No assessments, this history, uh, if we pay it off early or not, so in other words, we could leave the fifteen thousand in the park fund. And at the end of the year, if that money's still there, we can just apply it towards the loan.
We can apply it towards principal on it. I'd rather see it be
go that way.
I'd rather see it be the last chunk of money we pay towards the end of the year versus the first chunk, just to make sure we've got a saving grace for the full year. Since we're doing so much promoting with that and bringing the buses, that, you know, like all that conversation happening.
Yeah, I'd like to see the sponsorship that go first.
Yep.
Yeah, most definitely.
I don't disagree. I've heard from multiple people that field access is a big deal right now, so that if we can market Colton in a way where we can offer the double header.
Well, my thing is, yeah.
What, what's the difference in cost to do both little fields?
Do both little fields? Well, we don't really, I don't, I don't know what it is to do. I'm sure it's. I don't know.
I was wondering if they can turn one light, because that could be enough for the one field if, it's not a huge.
Because that little field, I mean, that's, that's, that's little guys playing, I mean. They're not playing it.
Yeah, they wouldn't be up to that.
So. You know. I mean, yeah, we'd be nice to have the whole field ready up, yeah, but.
Maybe it's something we can do temporarily is get the light, could we?
Oh, yeah.
Could we maybe get a quote from them?
Yeah, we can get a quote. Let's say, hey, when you're there, what would be, put another light up there?
Is there another pool up, or not pool, another pole off the, the large field that you could do the same way?
Pull that up.
Or maybe you can get two lights or three lights based on it, you know, it don't have to be as bright, but.
Pull that old one up. They gave me a map.
But at least if they wanna use that field to practice where there's no game going on or something.
Well, I think if that addition goes too, that's really gonna be.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
Our park is gonna be a big selling point for the.
It is, it brings a lot of people to town. A lot of small towns don't have.
Yeah.
It's a very nice. Did you mention, maybe I didn't hear, do we need to make a motion on this in order to get to that June date? Do you need a motion to?
I need, I need some sort of soft yes or a yes or a more.
To get that scheduled, okay.
I know, I wish we had the sponsorship here in front of us, but no, that's what we have. We sent out, what, sixty-two?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine? And we have another, how many we still gotta do? Right, he's got me some.
Yeah, I haven't touched anything, I've done it. Been too busy doing other stuff today.
So, th- this here don't show the rest of the way around that, the big field.
I don't think there's any poles past where that bleachers are.
Well, there's one off the corner of the big field. Because, because what I'm seeing here is I'm assuming it's this here light here that they're gonna shine into this field.
Yes.
Well, there's a light up here that.
I think I got paid in the sponsorship, I really do.
Yeah.
And I don't think the interest rate's gonna stay at six point five when they reevaluate. It's gonna go. Because that's pretty darn good.
Right now, that's a good rate.
Very, yeah. Yeah.
So I was just curious, because you know, sometimes you get a better guess instead of adding something later.
Let me take that back, because that might be an old, no, that's nevermind. So, no. Yeah.
Are there any gatefisher parks?
That's the one with the ten thousand.
That's the ten.
So, and then I'm sure there's more, Brandon. Brandon Lane from Sioux Valley. Help us dig in some more.
I was gonna say, because I thought there was one, I should look again to my favorite, I thought there was one that we looked after the pool. It had to do with like parks and rec. And the pool, for some reason, wasn't considered in, or whatever we wanted it for in the pool. It was actually intended more for the ball fields, but that's been a couple of years ago.
We can ask Sophie and see what she sees.
Yeah. Yeah.
You've seen, you should say.
I don't know, is there any more question?
From a finance officer's perspective, do you see us, do you see us gonna come through? Pay this loan for what we have on hand, the accounts that it could be paid from? Because we're kind, if we answer yes tonight, we're answering a little
I, I.
Little ahead, but I mean, we do have enough to make a decision. I'm just asking from a finance, since you look at our budget every day.
I think we can make it work, especially, um, just with what, um, what we've got budgeted net, like now, and then if even with the what sponsorships we know are coming in, we can make that work, or we can make those payments and everything. Um, though, so I, I think we can make it work, because in, I've got, I'm pretty confident that people will bounce to go over and be on the sponsorship stuff. I, I've talked to a few, couple, type, if I can speak. Um, a couple of businesses, because I, I talked to, um, Sam's Club and Walmart, and they were interested in, at, you know. And if, I think if we hit some of the bigger businesses too, not just those, because I just wanted to see if the big guys were interested, and they, they were really interested, so.
Well, Smithfield's interested, I already got the paperwork started on the way in.
I'm not the really big guy in St. Paul's.
Yeah.
No amount of money right now.
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
I don't know, I think, I think, I think we should go forward with this, because if then a new addition goes and stuff too, it's just another selling point for, for people to move out here with. You know, a pool and two lit ball fields and, you know, I mean, I see nothing but win-win.
Yeah, I know, like one business I talked to and I said, you know, I'm gonna try and, like, the one thing, like to get a slice on that little field for the little guys to play on. That's cool, the little guys, you know, all excited. Like, I'm in. Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Is that a motion?
Motion from Joe.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion from Joe. Second.
I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor? Now.
Getting put up by June.
Didn't want anybody.
See how much more?
Yeah, I'll ask him for another light.
You think we should wait till the sponsorships come in?
Yeah, we can wait. I can give them the soft yes and then. Do that for another month on interest. Okay. I mean, you guys got any question for Kyle on the loan? Besides, he needs to lower that interest rating. And I think that's something that will always work with the Indian bonds.
I appreciate the little confidence, I'm not always gonna expect it, but also gonna sit here as often as I can.
Yeah, then I'll do the bus route to Crooks. See if he supports us, and at first I was just gonna see if he'd support us, then, you know. He was all about it. He's like, I think this is a great idea, helps get that imaginary divide out of Colton and Crooks and get these kids together. So he presented it to his council last night. Their councils all about it, they will, just split the cost with us on it, so. We decide to go with this, we'll have to, you know, both entities are gonna have to get together decide how many days a week we wanna do it, you know, what days are we gonna do it? Um, what time the bus is going back? And then a price on every bus rider. Now, we're both kind of, Butch and I are both kind of agreeing that we in the business of making money off this whole deal, we just can make this portable as we can, but also if we can break even on this thing, that'd be awesome, so. Yeah, so right here, I'm just sending it out to Crooks just to see what the, the feedback was on it. Mind you say, we did this at like eight thirty, nine o'clock last night, put it on there, and this was at about five thirty. Pretty surprised on the monitoring spots.
What was the Imam of the Student Pool Pass that they would have to, if they remember how much that was, because if they're gonna buy pool pass.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and that was my next thing. This, but I think we need to look at raising our pool rates. At some point in time, maybe next year or whatever, seventy-five dollars for a whole season family pass is pretty cheap in payment. And we can maybe become more, uh, competitive with lifeguards and pool wages at that point, so. As I said, the city isn't gonna make any more money on it, we're just gonna distribute it to the staff, so.
We are just maintenance and paint and everything else.
Exactly.
Money for that stuff.
We'll get us closer to being zero with it instead of negative.
Yeah, yeah, this will definitely help us get to more of a.
What kind of numbers are you looking at for as far as, you know, you, you, you know, five hours a week for the ride to bus, or I mean?
So, I guess I'll start off at the beginning, we'll start out, so I reached out to Sherry with the bus garage here in Colton, we got a price. So it's eighty dollars and fifty cents for the bus driver. Plus fuel, plus a dollar fifty a mile, which I thought was cheap. He asked me, so just figured on a conservative number, a hundred fifty bucks.
Was it a mile, dollar fifty?
Can you say those numbers then?
Eighty dollars and fifty cents for the driver. Plus fuel, which would probably be, might as well, he said the bus that she's looking at, unless he just gets about seven miles a gallon, so might as well figure.
Pretty good.
Six gallons?
Or probably four gallons.
Four?
I'd figure high.
Yeah, but that's why I kind of rounded it out.
The whole AC.
With all the windows down.
With a dollar fifty a mile after that, so what's Colton and Crooks, like fifteen miles, something like that.
Sixteen point two to lunchtime.
Good job, Kyle.
Okay, sixteen.
So, we're. Do you kind of add those numbers up, you know, figure, just figure five dollar fuel, I mean, we don't know what fuel's gonna go, so.
You're pretty close about a hundred fifty there.
Hundred fifty, so that's what it comes down to.
So is there gonna be points on the pickup?
Nope, it's just gonna go into the community center and drop off at.
So it'll be one point for all the kids.
This is, yep, this is just a way to get them up here. I thought about, once we get that all hashed out, on how many days and times and all that, we'll go back into Crooks and have like a community meeting with these, and sign up date and tell these parents, this is not babysitting fee. We're not responsible, they are, you know, gonna be blanket under the bus if anything happens, but once they get to Colton.
Injury accidents.
Yeah, on the bus, we'll cover it. Once they're at the park, they're on their own, but once they're inside the pool, yes, we have eyes on your children, safety's our number one priority, everything on that, but once they leave that pool. Not a reply, you're gonna have to have that talk with your child. So. Also, I talked to Sherry about the bus, she asked if there was gonna be adult that ride on it, that ride on it, and I said, if I can get a volunteer, maybe, but most likely no, so we'll come up with a true two-strike policy on the bus, so if a child's messing up or misbehaving, one strike, okay, two strikes, there's not gonna be three, it's just.
Here's the list too.
There's not enough weeks to have three, so we want this to be a positive environment, not a and also when we go to Crooks, we're gonna stand behind our lifeguard, so if the lifeguard kicks out a child or has an issue with the child, tell the parent that's what it is, I mean, he'll be on neither suspension from the pool for a while, or I mean, we never really kicked anybody out for the whole season on the pool, but. Well, we have, but. Well, we have, but we don't, that's not our first go-to.
That is definitely.
I make a recommendation. Maybe two pickup points, one at the library, one at the community center.
Oh, instead of making them kids walk often.
That's almost a mile for those kids to go to the south end there and there's nowhere to walk. From, you know, going over the tracks until they hit that bike path in front of the bar.
They go drive right by there, by the library anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we'll just do the first pickup at.
Community center.
Community center. Whoever there, cause there'll probably be, honestly, it'll probably be bigger numbers at the community center than there will.
Yeah, probably.
We're talking about two pickup points and two drop-off points?
Yes, so then they'll drop them off at the library and then, and then they're just gonna drop them off right at the pool.
I think it's a great idea if we can make it work.
Yeah, we can, we can, so I ran some numbers myself, so if you figure, let's just, I'll do them again here. There'll be twenty-four trips this summer, if you figure with the bus, if you do three days a week. That's thirty-six hundred dollars for the season for this bus. So if we did, we came out, I think, I think, I think I figured that. I know I talked to some parents and I asked, I said, what would you pay, would you pay forty dollars for a bus pass for the whole season, just be done with it? And a lot of them were like, heck yeah, I'd pay that, that's cheap, so we did forty dollars, I'll pull that back up.
You have to sell ninety passes for that.
Yeah, to break even.
To break even.
Yep, so if we did forty, like right now, let's just say, if you add up these numbers of the children, that the ones that are very interested and interested. Were over ninety, so let's just turn it back down to seventy.
Are we, are we, have we made a decision on two or three days a week?
That's what we need to figure out with Crooks too, so we'll have to decide that, I'm just saying, what's the worst case scenario?
Most expensive.
Most expensive, we did that, we're at twenty-eight hundred. Like, strike that from thirty-six, we're eight hundred, it's gonna be about four hundred bucks.
Plus the extra income on, that family pass is coming in.
Plus, we'll probably break even, Crooks will probably have, you know, we'll have the four hundred dollar charge. And I talked to Patrick, our lawyer, to make sure there's no legal obligation with this all, it's like, definitely not. You're contracting the bus out, so that's their responsibility, once they're off that bus, no different than a Colton, your community kid going to the pool, so. Happens, you're just providing, you're not providing, you're setting up. And that's what we need to really label it as, is we're just setting up the transportation.
Shuttle?
Shuttle. Program isn't a nanny, this isn't a babysitting club.
I think that's a wonderful idea, I think we're gonna have to put a lot of curbs and gutters around it though, just to make sure that we. Maybe some frequently asked questions too, so.
We can just, I know Butch and I talked again today, he's, like you said, his council's all about it, so. We kind of agreed with, let this kind of, the survey kind of go for maybe a couple of weeks or a week and a half, and just get the full. Give it a full chance to see what everybody wants. And then we can get together and decide times, dates, on travels. I think regardless, I think we do two at the minimum.
Yeah.
Right. I would say we start with two, I mean, there's always conversation if it's, it's a hit, but.
I know, I kind of talked to my sister-in-law, I said, oh, I thought for sure five o'clock would be the time, and like, what come? Like four, four. Leave, I'm like, oh yeah, really?
I was gonna say, I see a lot of fours.
Yeah, say, yeah, at the four o'clock break, I was, because if you do four thirty, then you've got kids. Somebody has to round them up, even if they made an announcement, you know.
Set that up. Once recess hits, that was a blow that buses there.
There, there's a next question, are you gonna have somebody watching? Which kids go, or is there gonna be?
This, like I said, this is.
It's gonna be on the kids then to get on the bus.
It's gonna be a parent and a kid having that conversation, so if they miss that bus, they're gonna have to deal with mom, coming up and getting them.
Even ban this color for their, for their on the bus.
Yeah, we could, we could do bans.
For the kids. Yeah, we could.
Yep.
So we know that they're to be on the bus.
And the thing is, cause I've either read through some of the, some, some as well, is there a sign-out sheet that my children, child wants to stay up there for baseball, well. You just gotta have conversation, you just stay up there until I get there.
Right, right.
And then let parents know that. The park is, you know, under surveillance, there is cameras, so they're.
They could stay swimming, I mean.
Stay swimming, and then the thing is, if we do the four or five, these parents can, if they want their child, they can come up and grab them, let's do, so. At least they got them up to the pool.
But I think the band is a good idea, that way we know what kids.
And then there, again, you know, for the whole staying, a parent had to know. My child's gonna be staying for the baseball games, because kids, no, my mom said I'm okay with staying.
Well, that's why I've been.
Mom did not.
Yeah.
But that's why I come down, I don't want this to turn into a babysit thing either.
So I'm gonna say, we can't even have those conversations, we were truly high, we are a contracted shuttle. Like, we're talking either, if they're old enough to be in the pool independently. Then you have to be old enough to communicate with them that they get on the bus, they don't leave the park, and they get back on the bus. Because, I mean, even a doctor's note, there's no one that's gonna man that, because you're not gonna expect the lifeguards to do so. I mean, the courtesy would be, we buy a huge thing of bands, maybe we split the cost with Crooks and say, here's our way. Help provide the security that a lifeguard could say, hey, you got a blue band on, the bus is here, you need to go. But that's our effort then, that they need to take ownership.
How many kids are you gonna have that, right up here, that don't even go to the pool, are just here to hang out with friends? You know, catch the bus back.
Yeah, one last thing, maybe we look at the silicone bands or something like that and say, hey, you gotta wear your band to get on the bus today.
Well, that's, I think, these are things that we need to.
Bus driver goes, hey, where's your band? And then maybe after a point, that bus driver recognizes who, but. Well, they're gonna find a way to get on it.
Oh, yeah.
My, my buddies are in Crooks, so. And then I'll figure out how to go.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean going from here to there?
Or, or vice versa, yeah.
We're gonna have to come on both.
That's what I'm saying, it's one down the parent, you're gonna have to get after your child then, I'm sorry that happened, but. Don't ruin it for the masses, you know.
But, I'm just.
No, no, I know what you're thinking, I'm a hundred percent with you, that, that's.
Buy that bus pass, they get that silicone band and that's, you put that in your pool bag and.
Yeah, but you can't get on the bus without it, because then it's gonna be the kids that, I wanna go to Colton.
Right.
I'm riding, well, then they're not paying for the bus too, you know.
You have that band to get on and.
I think we still got a bunch of rubber silicone bands from.
I think this is a wonderful idea, I think we're very premature in the conversations, we're very early on, cause I think there's a lot of things we're gonna have to. Discuss, but I think the concept is.
Well, yeah, that's, when we sit with Crooks, we're gonna have to hash out.
Cause I think.
Want to get more.
To be, like you guys have mentioned, I mean, we need to have some, there's gonna have to be some curbs and gutters that we're not just a free-for-all service from Crooks to Colton. That you ride up for free, we've gotta have some way to determine who's paid for, and rightfully so, who's paid for a bus pass, who has not paid for a bus pass. What are the regulations on that, I mean, how much, how much ownership do we put on the bus driver to say like, hey, you don't got a pass, you can't get on? Then what? I mean, those are the conversations we need to discuss and have outlined before we.
They used to do it, and Butch said they used to do it in Crooks, we used to go to Wild Water West. That was a long time ago, and then they stopped doing it, I don't know why, he doesn't know why.
We also gotta make sure that the children that get on the bus have money to get into the pool, be a conversation as well.
That's where I wanna really strike, when we go back down there and have the community meeting with the parents. Get them on board, we'll ask, so, child does not need money up here, unless they wanna get a snack, but that's.
That's on them. Yeah, cause it's like, what happens if you have a child that gets on the bus, gets all the way here and goes, I don't have any money to get in the pool? And then it's a conversation, well, how many times do you allow that, then what do you do, you have the kid call their parent, wait for the parent to leave work to come up? I mean, those are the conversations that we need to talk, there are those scenarios.
No, and I think we make it, I'm like, it's gonna go off our pool, it's eight years, that's. You're under eight, you can't get on, like.
Right, yeah, there's that.
We're not gonna have, we're not gonna have that stipulation of, you know, you bring your four-year-old sibling up with you to go on the pool. And then we're expecting that twelve-year-old to watch a four-year-old and, I know, that's what it is up here in Colton, but.
I know we were working on the pool rule signs, did we ever get those? Created or decided on what the pool rules were gonna be?
Put some of that too long ago.
Was there some new ones, I think there's some new ones at the concession stand, was there a new one there?
We were gonna do something with them, I don't know if it was, we were gonna get new ones or we needed to add some, or was there wording? I thought there was a conversation around the pool.
Um, put some up, what, two, three years ago?
I'll have to look and see.
I know that was one of the feedback we got on the employee reviews that we needed, I think it was, we needed additional ones. To be posted for signage, yeah.
So are we, yes, I'm wanting to do this then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Butch, we'll figure out a date, does anything work for you guys, you know, who all wants to go, I guess, we all have to go, but if it gets more than welcome.
Why don't we set a date and see who it works for? I would definitely get a packet together from our perspective about, you know, what the rules are, what are we enforcing?
Yeah.
So that's all there.
Either the parents or they have it, very black and white, that's what it is.
Here's your form. Yeah, and just come with some, you know, FAQs, just have them right there and refer to that and.
Kyle gets us that POS, something that we can say, hey. Tell parents that you can load a gift card of fun.
Right.
Just buy, would be buying their buddy's candy.
Yeah.
What happened, I put twenty dollars on there.
Cause I'm pretty sure that was one of the feedback, we either needed.
We did, since I've been here, we've had that conversation.
Yeah, so do we need a, cause I mean, we're, I mean, are we, what, thirty days out? Just in case we're having those conversations.
Yep.
Just over.
Just over thirty days out, so we gotta have a sign made. She said there was some visibility reason why there needed, I think it was either one or two she wanted. Added in the pool area, but I can't remember where she asked.
No, there's always one on the west side, no, north side.
One on the front of concessions, right?
Yeah.
A bigger, a bigger one.
A bigger one on the front of concessions, and then there was one on the north fence, the hung on the fence.
Maybe it was just adding another one out there, or maybe there was that one out there and then maybe one in each locker room.
Or on the south side.
Cause, could would it hurt to put smaller ones in the locker room, just to put right when they walk out, cause then we'd also encourage them to shower.
Yeah.
We could put them on the outside of the, on those walkouts, those wooden ones, we could put them on that wall, that way they sit right when they walk out.
So maybe one larger, one and two smaller ones.
Got those lacquers that we got, you know.
Yep.
For kids to put their stuff in, we need to do a walkthrough down there and figure out where we need, where we wanna put them.
I was just thinking if we're planning, getting ahead of it and getting them made.
So with your conversation, if we do a walkthrough in like a couple weeks. Yeah, we forgot signage and maybe have made right after that, so we know how many signs.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
It won't take long to throw them together, so.
We have a list of the pool rules somewhere.
Yeah, they're on the website.
There are, okay.
We want to see, what do we walk through the twenty-eighth? We wanna do. Huh?
Friday evening.
I know. Well, we can, we don't have to do it late. Or we can do it early in the week.
Eight thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do the twenty-eighth, that would be fine.
That's Memorial Weekend.
Oh, yeah, okay, never mind.
No, oh, you're talking May twenty-eighth?
No.
April twenty-eighth. Oh, okay, oh, April.
What time? Five.
Or what works for anybody else, five?
Five thirty? Five thirty?
Earlier the better. Yep.
I, I could do a five if it works.
And then that walk through, then we'll figure out what we're gonna do for cleanup in there too.
Yeah, we'll do. Walk through for cleanup, um, things that need to be addressed.
It's already on there.
Five PM for pool walkthrough.
Bring the pressure wash down, pressure wash down there, him and I, or the pressure wash, everything, pretty much, got it. And go back and.
Now at the ADA and following that, as long as we do not change any structures, right?
Fix some fixtures, bath fixtures.
And we're fine to do all cosmetic changes, just nothing, that's what I was gonna say.
Did hire two staff people, or two new pool people.
Two lifeguards?
Well, one lifeguard, Diane met with us on that one, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, yeah.
From Baltic.
Okay.
And Maddie Heavy is gonna do pool staff.
How old is she?
Fifteen.
And what is Mandy gonna do?
Pool staff.
How old do you have to be to work there?
Fifteen. We did say Diane did pull up, we were last, one or about sixteen, and, state of South Dakota states that, almost are certified and.
Minimum age?
Fifteen, could be like.
Did we have, how many lifeguards do we have hired to the state then?
We got two coming back, right?
We got four total, cause there's two lifeguards and then there's two pool staff, if I remember right, cause it's, um.
We'll have three lifeguard, no, we got, we got, what, cause it's. These teams coming back and, and Grindy, and now this Elizabeth, so we got.
Um, Grindy is a pool staff, not a lifeguard, um.
And then. Monty's daughter said she do, helped do concessions.
So right now we're sending a three licensed lifeguards? Two, or certified lifeguards?
But like Diane said, you said the numbers didn't really come in till applications till school's done.
No, cause like Alison just redid her certification last week, so they're just getting going.
Oh, oh, it is a pool open?
Eight, seven, sorry, seven.
As I say, you can't work, like a fifteen-year-old can't work past seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's open, Jubilee Weekend we're open, just an hour longer, but seven o'clock. Old child labor lab.
We need, and we need roughly seven.
Never saw the only ones that wanna work anymore.
To make it so they don't get, because you can't do anything over twenty-eight hours a week, otherwise we have to let insurance hold them hours. So they have to come at twenty-eight.
So we need, we need at least four to open.
Or like.
Or additional.
Or additional, yeah.
Yeah, four more.
So. I'm gonna probably make another post again, put it on Facebook and then ask Baltic to share it and ask Crooks to share it now that if we do this.
Yeah, I was saying, is that gonna change for staffing, if we get a lot more kids? While we get for our lifeguards if we have.
Do two a day, and then the person that's in the stand will help watch too, the little end and stuff. If it gets super busy on the days we do bring the bus, we can always schedule three for a couple hours.
I'll tell that, I'll take that back too, I got one in the process, my nephew's gonna go get his certification, so.
Is he really?
On in my own family. Need lifeguards.
Great way to get a T M.
Oh, yeah.
Tell them the payment's going into our new life stew, for lights too.
Yeah, well, I told him that, he said, hey, uh. He worked for Raven, I said, Raven needs to be a sponsor, I know. He works for Raven, I said, Raven needs to be a sponsor, I know, he's working on them. Yeah, so spread the word on lifeguards and. Oh, and then did hire Grace, Pete's daughter, she's going to be taking over Cory's spot.
Oh. Summer help for Pete.
Which Grace will. Her little worker, so. She'll do good.
That doesn't fall under.
I was gonna say, that's not conflict of interest, right, since Pete's technically her boss.
Right.
Did you just say Grace Pete's daughter?
Yeah, how would that be?
Because Pete's actually her boss.
Are we running into any type of conflict?
That's decision-making stuff, though.
I guess I don't know.
I think that's just a council thing.
Are you saying on the, they go like municipality aspect, or?
Well, if you look at it from an employee review, if you and I, if you, if we were to ask, review her supervisor. Her supervisor is her father.
Yeah.
Are, are we okay, are we legally covered that, that we can do that? Like, based on like deputism laws, conflict of interest, like Scott and I can't even be on. Shared councils, I can't make motions on things that he's present on, are we okay legally with having a daughter and a father?
Working together.
It, it was, it's a supervisor employee relationship.
You might wanna ask Patrick on that, because I know there's a conflict of interest law.
But. Because I don't understand, I don't, I don't see why there would be. He has. Ultimately.
Yeah, but you gotta look.
No, I mean, I get that, I mean.
It basically come down to her raises, and then favoritism on. Does how many help, how much help does she get?
Set her raises.
But, but you'll ask Pete. Well, she's doing phenomenal, and she could be a turd.
Yeah. But she won't, no, I mean, it'll be, you know, it'll, it'll be pretty easy to pick it off, when she's the only person mowing the irons and taking care of the park. That if stuff's not getting done.
Kind of shows itself.
Yes. Yeah.
From what I can find, a public official.
I think if it was maybe one of our.
It's public officers. Generally, put into the public office, like. Him hiring their child.
It'd be no different than Heather Madison hiring Nathan and all that.
That's just like Jeff Peterson, who's on here. He worked there, but judges had to switch roles, he could be on. You know, so it can be.
That's the standard, lead by example.
I know a lot of businesses don't know. You know, I know the state of South Dakota, you cannot supervise even an in-law.
Right.
Or any family member. When I worked at Menards, Menards is the same way, you can even work at the same store as a relative.
Right, that's with us too, we, yeah.
You can't work in the same apartment, you can't work anywhere with a relative.
I mean, when it be work, just asking Patrick, just to make sure that we cover, read these. I have one banking thing. Since it was brought up, when do we think we can have the access to pay the water bill online? Set on the website?
I'm working with, uh, I've got, I've got a meeting with Lisa tomorrow, and we're going over, we're just going through everything.
I know that's, that's, I have been asked about it, and I know I've asked.
I get asked all the time too.
I pay mine online.
No explicit prohibition against. Deputism in the legislative branch located in South Dakota State statutes.
So you think we'd have some updates on the A C H and the water bill for like next meeting? Okay.
Probably would. I've got a meeting with her tomorrow, and we're going over more, more of it, so.
Okay, and then the last question I had was the signage coming into town. On the four points, I know we were created some, where did we end on that? Are those done, are we just waiting to install them because of the weather? So they're not just blank squares?
Did they ever get okay?
I thought we approved them. Or did we make changes and we wanted to look at the final version? Because the weather's getting nicer and the traffic's gonna pick up. It'd be nice to have those up.
Look in the minutes and see what we ended on.
I know we looked at a couple of different versions, and I don't know what we ended up deciding on. But if we could get them up and.
I'll look at the minutes and I find out what's in there, you know, because it was, um. I remember, we can also just look on, I think it was maybe one of the ones we livestreamed as well, the last, last one we, we did, I think.
Because our next one is May, so, I mean, the traffic will start picking up towards the lake and stuff too, it'd be nice to have them up there. That is all I have, I may too.
Anybody else got anything they wanna add?
Do, um. Sponsorships, do you? Do you know who is or isn't?